I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Jim? Jim's on mute.
Jim needs to unmute himself. Like I said, it's up. There we go, Jim.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know what happened, but I've been on the call all this time. But anyway, go ahead.
Jim, are you able to, are you on a phone where you can see the screens?
Yes, I can see the screen.
Okay, great. All right. I'm gonna call the meeting to order then. I would first ask the zoning board of appeals members to identify themselves. Nanette Falkenberg, Chair.
Karen Kopta, Member.
Margaret Minor, Member.
Bill? Bill here. Is Bill muted?
No, he wasn't. He was...
Bill?
I think we lost him.
No.
Anyway.
There he is. He's still here.
Okay. Jim Kelly?
And Steve, do you want to introduce yourself?
He's muted.
Jim Kelly, alternate.
We got you.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
Steve is still muted.
Okay, I'm gonna introduce him. Steve Meyer, alternate.
And how about Bill?
I'm still waiting. Bill? Bill? Oh, we have an audio problem, it seems like. Okay, I'm gonna introduce Bill Davy. Oh, we lost Bill now.
Can you hear me now, Steve Meyer?
Now, we can.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Bill? I'm going to read the...
I'm admitting, I'm re-admitting Bill. He's joining from another device.
Okay. Bill? Julie?
He is still connecting to audio.
Oh, all right. Julie, while we're waiting, would you read the notice?
Sure. So, first application is, legal notice was posted in voices. It appeared twice on August 3rd and August 10th, 2007, 2022, for Chad Conway and Mark Drundle, accessories map 7, lot 17, located at Two River Road. Case file, 2000, it should be, they printed 21, it should be 22, there's a typo, dash 0089, variance to build a freestanding garden brick wall with the side setback of a non-conforming property. Refer to zoning regulations variances from section 20.79, 20.35, 3.5, and 3.4.
Okay. How are we doing with Bill? We've lost him completely now.
Just, he's trying to re-enter again.
There he is.
There he is.
Hi, Bill.
No audio. You're muted. Can anyone hear him?
No. Does he know he's on mute?
Hello?
Hey!
Okay, there we go.
I got a problem with my computer, so I'm on my iPhone, so that's what's going on.
Okay. All right. We've read that, we've, we've, the notice has been read, Bill, and I'm about to call on the applicants. Bill Davies is going to lead this discussion. So I'm gonna turn it over to Bill and recognize the applicants to make their presentation.
You wanna seat anybody?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Julie. I'm gonna move up Jim Kelly.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
Okay. Hello.
Okay, I'm gonna call on the applicants for their presentation, and then I'm turning it over to Bill.
Okay, I'm Chad. This is Mark.
Hi, I'm Mark.
We're sitting in our dining room in front of the window. That is the wall behind us, just so we can make that clear. The first thing that Mark and I would like to say is that when we started this project, it sincerely did not occur to us that to build a freestanding wall well inside our property line in our garden was going to be a problem. So we started it. Maybe that was our bad, but we did start it, and it's constructed partially. The other thing we want to make clear is that when Mr. Cody came by, we weren't on the property at the time, and went to Rob Schlegel, who is a true professional and a very good guy, and I say that as much in defense of Rob as ourselves, when Mr. Cody said to stop, he stopped. And when Mr. Cody sent the letter that you all have in your packet, there are two pictures of the wall. The wall in no way changed. We did no further work at all. All we did was clean up the site, remove the bricks, he removed all of his equipment, and our housekeeper at our instruction took a bucket of white paint and painted the wall white, because we didn't want this big red brick thing, which is not what we envisioned or intended with, you know, Mr. Cody coming back or our neighbors or whatever, so we just painted it white. But even if you look at those two photos, nothing was done. So I say that in defense of Rob Schlegel, the mason, and ourselves that we didn't do anything after the stop work order happened. When that did happen, I called immediately, and then I went to town hall. I went, he instructed me to go to buildings. Building said they didn't care if it wasn't seven feet tall because it was not attached to the house. It was a freestanding structure. And Mr. Cody initially told me that buildings were seven feet, but zoning was six feet. I said, "No problem. We will lower the wall to six feet," which is our intention from that conversation forward. After that conversation happened, we asked for guidance, and then Mr. Cody was doing his due diligence and asking, and weeks went by, and during that process, we don't know anything about this. I got the regulations. We looked at the regulations together. The definition of fence seemed to fit the screen wall that we had built, and the materials regulations seemed to include specifically brick. So I thought, "Okay, that's interesting, but this is not our level of expertise." So we took it to an expert. We gave it to Neil Marcus, the zoning lawyer. He read it. You all have the letter. He made his argument. Mr. Cody has made his argument as the ways that he sees the regulations, and he's also an expert. In Mr. Cody's original letter that's in your packet, even at the end of his first letter, he says he sees it both ways. So that's just is what it is. It's for you, all of you, to determine whether this needed a variance, whether it was against the regulations, whether it should have been stopped in the first place, and whether we're allowed to do it. Where Mark and I think we are now is we have this screen wall structure that's inside the setback, which we totally get. But since we have no abutting neighbors, we have one abutting neighbor who's on the far side of the property, it does solve our problem, and it doesn't affect anybody else. And we were hoping that you would be able to see, there's a lot of glare now because the sun is setting, the car is driving behind us. It's not just that the road is close, but the wall is closer to us than the fence, and not only is Weller's Bridge busy and close, but it's on a hill. The way that the elevation happens going up and down, that the headlights jump the fence and come right through. The wall that, the portion that's up has made a big difference already, but the two curved parts you see in the plan are designed that way because the curve on the one side will block the headlights coming over Weller's Bridge, and the curve on the other side, yeah, from Baker Road across the bridge itself. And the other curve is designed for the cars that are coming down because the cars are, the top half of the cars are above the fence. So this is just a way of us solving that problem and stopping it from coming through this window that's behind us. You know, and it doesn't increase the footprint of the house. It's not attached to anything. It's freestanding. Also, Mr. Cody's like, he talks about a patio. There's no patio. There's always been a flower garden there, and there's always been a fountain there since 2017. The thing that he's referring to as the patio is just a walkway around the existing flower bed. There's no seating out there. It's not like we're gonna be dining out there. It's the side of the yard. It's really about just protecting this window and have something to look out outside the window. And the tube that he references is for the irrigation property, the irrigation system that's already all over the property. And it was there. We had to tear it up to put in the foundation, and it was just there to feed the flower bed. So, you know, we didn't, we apologize if we started this without the permits. When we did go to building after the fact, he told us we didn't need a permit. But according to Mr. Cody, we do have this, these calls are a structure. We call it a fence, a screen, and if it had to come down, we'd be in this bizarre situation. We'd have to take down a brick wall, from our understanding, and put up a stone one because the stone is allowed and the brick isn't. So I guess that's where we are. And we just sincerely don't see how it affects anybody else that solves our hardship, which is clear and has no effect on anything. It's in keeping with everything else we've done here. We've been here for 20 years. We've done absolutely everything we can to make it as beautiful as we possibly can, and we'd like to finish this project because it's the last project we have to complete our property. That's about it.
Okay. Let's go, let's go to the questions for the board. Does anybody have any questions for these gentlemen?
Steve Meyer. Oh, I don't, the only thing I had is, so he was roaring saying there was a patio because that sort of threw me.
Right. There's no patio.
So... This is Margaret. Is my hand up? I didn't even know, I didn't even know I put it up. I have a question. Am I off mute? Yep. I had a question about the screening aspect.
Okay.
It looks like, you know, it looks like you want a pretty good screening. I'm quite impressed by the vegetation, good trees, and then a wall, a fence, what I would call a fence. Does this, how much of the light coming down the hill would this structure actually, how much does it actually screen it?
It actually, it's not really about the lights coming down the hill. It's about the lights coming from Baker Road once people turn onto Weller's Bridge. So when you turn from Baker Road onto Weller's Bridge, that is a straight shot into our dining room. So all the way from that stop sign coming completely until you get past the house, those headlights come into our dining room. We've planted now three times those evergreens that are there. And every season, we've had to go back at great expense and replace those evergreens, which I will, we plan to continue to do, but they won't grow and thicken up because of the salt runoff from the road in the winter, which constantly kill our evergreens.
Right.
So that's the problem.
Had you considered a more standard fence?
We have a fence. We have a fence, but because of the slope of the property, I guess everyone knows our property pretty well, and that hill coming down Weller's Bridge, the slope where the fence sits, it's actually below the grade of where the house sits, which when Mr. Cody talks about the fact that there's a six-foot fence, and then there's, the wall will be six feet, the fence actually ends up sitting about a foot or foot and a half below because of the way the grade, the slope of the property.
It's not just the proximity of the road. It's the fact that it's on this hill. We have no abutting neighbors because that Weller's Bridge curves right around our property, which makes our property unique, from the bridge right up past steeply up the road. So having the wall closer to the house makes a big difference. So I know it doesn't sound sensible, which we were hoping you could see behind us, the cars, but the glare because the sun's going down. It does, we know because that portion is up, that it's already helped. But seeing that and doing the curves on the same level is really gonna solve our problem. You know, if you're in here at night, you can see it.
So it will screen the room that you're in, but you feel it from the cars coming up Weller's Bridge Road. You have a problem with the light coming into that room?
Correct.
This fence or this structure will screen that light?
It will. It will. It already has, and it also, yeah.
Does that room or...
I'm sorry. It also comes in the upstairs bedrooms, but our primary concern is this room because it's a dining room, and we use it at night, and it has this big window. So the other windows are smaller. The other windows are, you know, we can, you could, you know, upstairs is not as important, or the kitchen, or the Weller's pantry on the side here is as important. It's really this one. We're in here having dinner, and the light sweeps through the dining room. And Weller's Bridge, in the 20 years we've been here, the 19 years we've been here, the traffic on Weller's Bridge is on a completely different level than it was, whatever's happened. So it's constant.
So just last question. Did you consider building a more standard type of fences you have along the sideline to do the screening? I think you're saying it would work better if it's closer to the house, but...
I mean, I guess, so I guess the question is that we could either do a wood fence or a stone wall, which, right? Because we have stone, we built stone walls all over our property. So I guess, I mean, we could take this brick wall down and put a stone wall there that's six feet tall, but it's, you know, we've already built the brick wall.
And also, the stone wall there would be a lot more jarring, I think. The only reason it's a white brick wall is because on the other side of our house, our foyer and that side of the house is all white brick. So we just thought it made more sense to continue the same material on this side of the house that's on that side of the house. There's a white brick foyer on that side of the house, so we built a white brick screen on this side of the house to protect us from the headlights.
And our plan is to, you know, plant and grow the ivy on the brick wall, so...
The, watch out, it'll pull those bricks out. So really, when I looked, when I looked at it, I wondered, well, how much light is this actually gonna screen? Is it really gonna function as an effective screen? Because that's one of the features. You mentioned its decorative aspects and so forth, and I had... So I'm trying to visualize the problem you have. I guess it provides a limited screen, at least for one or more of your downstairs rooms?
Yeah, I mean, we weren't in some panic to build a random structure in our side yard. We're trying to come up with a solution for a very specific problem because we're tired of sitting in here at night and having those lights sweep. And there's no, there's no screen like a brick wall. I mean, and it does make a difference. We know because we have it already, but the two curved parts that are not built yet, curving to protect us from the lights coming across the bridge, and curving this way to catch the lights coming down the road, up and down the road, you know, we are very confident it's gonna completely solve the problem. But the wall that's up already has significantly improved it. So we're not just theorizing. It's a solid barrier. It's close to the house, and it does catch more light than the fence, which is closer. And because of the grades, because of physics, the closer the barrier is to the house, the more effective it is in blocking the lights.
So what's up already is basically finished, right? When you say what's up already is already improved.
Well, we have to reduce it to meet the...
The wall, the wall is, the length of the wall is finished, but if you look at the drawing that we submitted, there are two wings on either side of it that are five feet.
They're curved.
So those, the two wings have not been built.
And you think those wings also will serve to screen?
Those are the most important part.
They're more important than the section that's up.
I could use a little drawing with light beams. Okay, I get what you're saying.
Okay.
Thanks.
Karen Kopta, I didn't, just, could you provide a little clarification? Is the, the wall as we see it tonight, is that the finished height?
It is not, because when John informed us about that it had to be six feet tall, then it was already built at this height because we didn't know that there was a restriction about the height. So we need to bring it down about six inches, which we will do. So I think it's one cinder block that it needs to drop. I was not clear if the columns, because when we spoke to John from Buildings Department, he said to us, he didn't care how tall the columns were, that they only cared about how high the wall was. So the columns tend to be a little higher. We're going to drop those also. But I don't know if those have to be exactly six feet tall also. So you guys will have to give me some clarification on that.
I don't know that either.
Right, right. You know, I mean, for us, a decorative part of it is that the columns are a little bit taller than the wall, so that it's just, but I'm gonna do whatever you guys ask me to do.
And so, and so with regard to your topography where the wall is, it's going to be uniformly six feet regardless, or whatever height?
Right, right.
The more height, the more protection you get.
Yeah. I mean, right now it's six and a half, but if we need to drop it to six, we're certainly willing to do that. And we'll drop the columns also, whatever we have to do. But even dropping it, even dropping it, that foot, because you can't really see the angle of that corner where that wing on the right-hand side swings, but that's the biggest drop on our property. So the wall will, it will cover, it will give us the most protection from the headlights.
Yeah, I can certainly see, you know, the, your, you know, why you would desire to have something there with the headlights coming
Right.
straight in. But so, so ultimately, if this moves forward, the height will be the same regardless of what the grade is?
Well, it'll be six feet off from the grade, right. So we're not changing the grade. It'll be, it'll be six feet tall, which is what it's required to be.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, I have a question. Okay, so I drove by there this afternoon to take a look from the road at least, and I'd like to know how much, how many more feet will be the two wings on either side of what we see now?
Five feet.
So what, and right now we're looking at how many feet that's built?
14.
Okay, so obviously it's going to be 24 feet long. Okay.
Correct.
And that, I guess I can see from the picture here behind you two gentlemen, is I can see what looks like the setting for the wing that's facing Baker, right?
Right.
Right, right.
That's the foundation there.
Right, the foundation's there.
Right, okay, so it's gonna curve outward, obviously, not inward.
Yeah, right.
It actually curves inward.
It kind of, yeah.
There's the wall, and it curves in, it curves in like this because it's rounded, it's concave to the bridge.
Right.
And those cars, and on this side it's concave to the hill with the cars up and down.
Got you, got you. Thank you.
Oh, I did have one more question.
Okay.
Go ahead, Margaret.
Yes, so, of course, we're always concerned about a solid structure on a downhill curve. Are you saying that the existing fence and trees, there won't be any danger of a car that leaves the road hitting your new wall?
No, there's not. It's not possible for a car to enter there.
And we've had two accidents in the time we've been here, and they, what they do is, one was coming across the bridge, one was coming down the hill, because there's, on the side of the road, there's the guardrail, of course, and then there's some property, and then there's the plantings, which we will always continue, so there's no possibility of the car, the car, not the car ever hit the fence. They didn't get that far because of the guardrails that the town of the state has installed.
Thank you. That was my question.
Yeah.
I have one further question. Steve Meyer speaking. The footing, in other words, a fence has posts, well, most fences do. What is the footing or what is the structure that Cody seemed to be talking about under the wall?
Concrete.
Going to the ground?
It's concrete so that the wall won't move and won't freeze.
Won't shift.
Won't shift in the winter.
I think that, I think that Mr. Cody himself will say that it is extremely well-constructed, and that the mason, Mr. Schlegel, really knows what he's doing, and he built a very, a very solid foundation so that, you know, the wall is secure.
Thank you.
Right.
Um, anybody else? The question about electricity in the wall and the lights, is that, that's a non-event now? That's not, we're not putting lights in the wall?
Well, that's up to you. I mean, I didn't know that it was, I mean, we have lights in our other stone walls. I didn't know that putting lights, I know that we can't put, attach any sort of electrical to vegetation, but I didn't know that that was a problem attaching it to the interior of the wall.
Okay.
I mean, we did, we did apply for an electrical permit, so we did go into town and pay and apply for the permit.
Okay.
I have, I have a question. Nanette Falkenberg. I would just like you to state for us the hardship, and then I also would, I'm interested to know whether John Cody wants to say anything. So those are my two questions.
I mean, I'll state, I'll state the hardship.
Okay.
We have a unique hardship unlike anybody else that we're aware of, anybody's property, because our lot is non-conforming. There isn't a single thing on the property that's within the 30-foot setback, including the front or side of the house. It's not only that Weller's Bridge, the busy road, curves all around our property, but it's on a hill, which is a big part of it. That's why the lights jump the fence. So the hardship is our unique non-conforming lot where a very busy road, the headlights are shining right into our windows, so we need a screen. That's the hardship.
So the fact that the lot in the house are non-conforming are not a hardship? They don't constitute a hardship?
Right.
They are not of and by themselves a hardship?
Right.
Okay, and I, I just wondered if John wanted to say anything.
Hi, Nanette. John Cody, zoning enforcement officer. If anyone has any questions whatsoever about that, I'd like to clarify some things. One of my concerns I do have is that on their application, they call it a landscape wall. I don't know where you find a landscape wall. To me, that would be more like a landscape feature, especially if they're going to be planting vegetation on it, making it more of a decorative aspect. The footings, yes, it is certainly a structure. It's incredible work. I talked to the contractor there multiple times. Very nice fellow. He told me some things you might know about. Other discrepancies that are being played, please just ask me any questions you guys want, and I'll tell you the best I can.
Okay, anybody with questions?
Well, so, I have a question for John. So if John, so if the applicants were to take the height of the wall down of either half a foot, six inches, or whatever it is required to, is it...
Is it, would that be feasible?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Well, the way I look at that, the way our regulations state that is, fences and stone walls are permitted. I don't, my opinion, for what it's worth, I don't think landscape features are a stone wall. Drive around Roxbury, we have some gorgeous stone walls. They're everywhere, every farm in Roxbury. In Roxbury, stone walls everywhere. I don't call that a stone wall.
Well, yeah, it's Steve Meyer. Yeah, I don't see this as really a conventional issue, except defining what it is. When I was reading through the material, is, you know, is there such a thing as... is, you know, is there such a thing as a stone fence, or is there such a thing as brick as opposed to stone walls? I mean, that's the part that troubled me is, and I know you're making a distinction. If you just lay that out, it might be helpful.
Well, if we do look in the dictionary, fences are either
Uh-oh.
Julie, fences are put up either to keep something in or keep something out, same as stone walls. That pretty much negates, in my opinion, negates the ideology that this is a wall. It is a landscape feature.
But aren't we keeping the lights out? Are we keeping the car lights out from entering our property, from coming up Weller's Bridge Road off of Baker Road?
Behind the six foot fence and the bushes you already have that are are permitted?
But the
You know, wall, when I measured it, seven foot ten on the columns, six foot eight in the center.
Okay, which which I which we acknowledge that we did before the work order with the stop order, which we abided by. But we will drop that wall to, we'll drop it to six feet if that's what's need be.
I I could I just, I'm sorry, Steve Meyer, could I just, because I think what you're both saying now gets to my point. If I build a fence, that will keep something out. So if there's a bear, a dog, or, you know, a kid, whatever, it'll keep them out. Certainly, looking at what they've built, it would keep something out. I mean, I guess I'm sort of befuddled by how one parses those distinctions. But, you know, maybe it came from the applicant calling it a landscape wall or something, but, I mean, to me, it looks like a wall.
It's a wall.
And so a wall, a wall is 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 not okay, but a fence is okay?
Well, a stone wall is okay.
Fences and stone walls are.
Okay.
Concrete, mortar, electrical, plumbing, I wouldn't call that a wall.
But I drive around Roxbury and people have put up stone walls and they put electrical lighting on top of them at the entrance to their driveways. So you can electrify a stone wall?
For lighting purposes, yes, you can light, you can light your pathways for access so you don't get hurt. This isn't really an accessory and it's not really a stone wall. It's a landscape feature.
Yep. One other thing, John, you just said plumbing. Is there plumbing in this wall?
When I went there, the initial thing, there is black pipe used for irrigation systems popping up. It was never put on the original sketch, which I have, which did have a patio on it, by the way. So and electrical, none of that, there were no permits taken out. I'm talking to the contractor. He did have this conversation. He told me he had this conversation with them about obtaining a permit and they decided to go ahead without one. That's why the contractor made it, stated to me that he made sure that he would get paid in full with him being kicked off the job or not.
I don't think any of that's relevant, and we certainly weren't instructing at great expense to build this screen with telling the contractor that if he told us, oh, no, this, you're gonna have to take this down. There's no secrets here. Every single person in Roxbury drives by this corner, you know, at least once a week, most of them every day. So it's not like we're trying to get away with anything. This is one of the most public corners in Roxbury. So that doesn't, I mean, that doesn't make any sense to us.
And he was not compensated for any work that hasn't been done.
I don't know why he would tell me that today I went there, but
Why he would say that either.
I don't think that's relevant to our discussion, gentlemen, so we're gonna, we're gonna, who who gets paid, who doesn't get paid, so no, no, doesn't, is not part of what we're gonna try to work out today. What we need to figure out now is, are we gonna decide if this is a, what we as a board have to decide, is this, is this, is this a, an exist, a stone wall that was, that is installed, that the applicant is willing to lower down to the six foot length, or is it, as John suggests, some kind, something different than a stone wall? So I think our board's gonna have to go through this, and we're gonna have to figure out what um, what we believe it to be. So what I would say at this time is, is there anything else you guys want to add to the discussion that can, can be relevant to what we're what we're doing?
Margaret, so I looked up the definition dictionary because like many regulations, sometimes it's not ideal. So I looked up the dictionary definition of fence, which I have somewhere, and which always, it's not a fence. I looked up the dictionary definition of stone wall, looked at every different kind of stone wall, and like ninety nine percent of what you can see on Google for stone wall and how to build a stone wall is all stones. Now, that isn't a wall, just a plain wall. And so the definition I got here is a continuous vertical brick or stone structure that encloses or divides an area of land. Now, to me, I mean, the first thing when I looked at it is, well, what is it walling off? It's, it's not what I would, I don't know if twenty feet counts as a continuous structure, but it's relatively a small distance in the property. That's why, so I'm not sure it is a wall. To me, it looks more like a monument, but I notice, I think the screening, you could say, well, whatever it is, it does screen the light. And I think that's what you're saying. And I'm not, I'm not good enough on how lights work at night to to really judge that. But I gather that you're saying it definitely has a screening function. So my, according to my, to what I think the dictionary definitions are, it's, it's not a stone wall, and it's not a fence. Matter of interpretation, is it a wall? I guess we could look up lots of definitions. And but I, that was the one that that came up first. And the continuous struck me as a feature that's not possessed by this wall. So that was all I wanted to say.
I mean, I think that the dictionary definitions are less relevant and more clear than the definitions that are in the regulations. Because when you read the definition of the fence in the regulations, it says, I don't have it in front of me, but you you have it in the, in the letter that our expert came up with, that the the regulations do seem to suggest that our structure, for lack of a better word, does fit the definition of a fence. And specifically listed in the materials allowed for fences, it specifically lists brick into the materials regulation. So that's the only reason I went for a professional opinion is that Mark and I both read it. I read it over and over again, and I really got the feeling that this does, this does fit into the definition. So that's why we went to outside counsel to say, are we crazy, or does this actually fit inside the regulations as they're written? So that was, that was where we were coming from.
Bill, Bill, can I read from twenty point three five?
Yes, go ahead, please do.
A constructed barrier of wood, stone, or any other material or combination of materials that is erected to enclose, screen, or separate an area. The height of the fence is measured from the existing ground level prior to any excavation or filling to the top of the fence.
That exactly describes what you're looking at behind us. It's a screen made of various materials, and if you go to the material section of the regulations, it specifically states brick.
Okay, anybody else comments?
Do we have any comments from the public you wanted to bring forth, Julie?
Bill, it's John Cody. I do have one.
Okay.
We are focusing on the hardship for this, correct?
Yes.
Um, yes, actually, via Butter, Daniel Rogiero, sent me an email, and which I believe is in the packet with everybody, that he reviewed the application and he had no issues with it, and he hoped it was approved. So
Okay, thanks, Julie.
That's, that's it for public comment.
Okay. Motion, is it, so no further comments from, from anybody on the board? Any questions? Okay, we're gonna do, we're gonna make a motion to close the public hearing. If there's no further comments or questions, then the board can discuss the 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 case in front of us. So if there's anything else, step, speak forward, otherwise we will close the, we'll make a motion. I'd like somebody to make a motion to close the public hearing.
So both?
I second.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed there. That means that nobody can, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss this case amongst the board at this time, and we'll try to come up with a decision. All right? Okay. Who wants to go first? Who wants to speak to this?
I I can start.
You may say your name is.
Say my name, Karen Kohta.
Yeah, Karen, yeah, thanks.
Well, I think while the 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 appearance of the wall is not, of the proposed wall is not what's traditional in Roxbury, or what we're accustomed to in Roxbury with all the beautiful stone walls that we have. It seems to me that nevertheless, this structure fulfills the definition of a wall or a fence, whose, the purpose of which is for screening. And it, and it's also well within, you know, the the property boundaries. I I can, I can understand why the, why the applicants would want to, it's like a constant flow of traffic that also has developed, as Roxbury has developed. So my feeling is that even though it's not necessarily what we're typically accustomed to, it does fit in with the house. And even though now it's like taller than it would be, I've driven by it like a whole bunch of times, and it kind of, it it almost disappears really behind that white fence. So that's my feeling about it at the moment.
All right, thanks, Karen. Anybody else?
Yes, I drove by today as well, and it does, the brick wall does actually, you know, fit in well with the overall house. I don't know if the entire house itself is white brick, but it's certainly of a piece with the wall, which is stone wall probably would look actually a little odd. If they bring it down to the required height of five feet, I think we should approve this.
I think it's six feet.
Oh, six feet. Well, I'm sorry, my apologies. As long as they reduce it to the the required height or the maximum height allowed, then I think we should approve it.
All right, Margaret?
Yeah. I don't think it, the various appearances of the word wall and fence and stone wall in our regulations had me going to the dictionary. I don't think in terms of the definition as the net read it, read it, that it's supposed to, and one of its functions is to enclose. This clearly doesn't enclose anything or prevent entry or prevent passage. So I don't think in function, and it's definitely not a stone wall, but I I don't think in function that it is what you would, you know, that the function of either enclosing or preventing passage doesn't have those functions. So the one function I could see that is mentioned in our regulations that a whatever structure, a wall or a fence, did relate to screening. And then my second question was, well, I I don't think, I don't think there's a, there's a legal hardship, but I'm I'm not sure that's relevant here. My second question was, well, it's not conforming. You're supposed to do as the minimum, you're supposed to, in an application, reduce the nonconformity if possible. And then I think if you're doing an addition or adding something in, it should be as conservative as possible in order not to increase the nonconforming structures on the property. So that was one reason I asked, had had the applicants considered less less solid, a, 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 a lip, something that was not quite such a solid piece of, piece of sculpture, which I think, I think basically it is decorative, but if it screens, that's worth considering. But I haven't heard alternatives are, and the evidence regarding screening is kind of, you know, it's, I'm not too good on on lights at night, where they go. So those are my concerns, that it's, it's not really a fence or a wall as we mean it, but it does seem to screen, or it's supposed to screen. And is it the least possible increase in the nonconformity in order to achieve screening? I don't know. That's a question that I don't know if, that's a question that's just in my mind. I don't know how relevant it is. That's all.
Okay, anybody else in the net?
Look like Steve is trying to talk.
Steve?
Oh, he's, you're muted.
You, Steve, you're mute.
Oh, sorry. You, you and and Bill and Nanette said two things, which are really the crux of what I've been sort of thinking about with this. I don't see how hardship even plays into it. I find it difficult to believe that lights on, you know, the street are hardship. On the other hand, I don't think it's necessary, because all we're really discussing, as I think, and that said, is, is it a, is it a wall, or isn't it a wall? Is it a wall that conforms? You know, because because isn't that really the issue? I mean, if it's a wall and you can have a wall, is this a wall?
Well, I think
Good.
No, I I agree with you, Steve. It's, that's, that's, the hardship's not there. It's the, it's the decision on whether this is a wall or not, not a wall. And if it is a wall, then it has to be under six feet tall to be in compliance. So that's my thought too, but let's continue on. I think you have some good thoughts there. Nanette, do you have something?
I'm really, I think it's a very close call. And I don't have anything actually to add. I think, I think it it comes, well, maybe I do. It it comes down to this definition of whether or not, well, two questions, two points, I guess, is there a hardship? Do the lights constitute a hardship? I'm not sure. And does, do the lights constitute a definite, meet a definition of screening? You know, I'm also not sure. So I'm still thinking about it. I know I better decide quickly, but I'm still What about you?
I don't, I don't, I don't see a hardship with the, with the lights as far as what we can address. There is plenty of houses in Roxbury that have lights on. And it is probably, I understand what they're going through with, they have more lights than if, you know, probably anybody else because of that term. I think they could, you know, I, at that section of the property, they could have probably chosen some evergreens to form some kind of a garden. That could have been done, but I still, I still think that the regulations do allow for a wall. And so I think we have to really look at that. Is, if the wall was six feet tall, if it came for variance, I don't think what you read, Nanette, and what we read, and read I don't think what you read, Nanette, and what we read, and read before, it doesn't say a wall has to be closed in, closed in cattle, closed and keep out there. It doesn't have, it doesn't say that in our regulations. So we have to decide if that wall is, i- i- if it's an actual wall, or if, or if it's, or if it's, um, you know, as John said, which is, uh, a possibility, is it, is it more, more of a, a landscape enhancement, a, an art, an art? Um, there's some, some, some form of art, but it, you know, that's so, sort of what we're looking at, I think, but, but the regulations, if, if it's a wall, then we have to grant the variance because we're, because it's a wall. So we have to decide as a group, is it, is it, do we consider it a wall? I think that's right in front of us.
So could Nanette read the definition again that you read? Because I think it does talk about that encloses something, but it also says that screens. But I think enclosed is part of what our language is. Um, it's an "or", not an "and". Um, a cons, a constructed barrier of wood, stone, or any other material, or combination of materials that is erected to enclose, screen, or separate an area. Um, the height of the fence is measured from the existing ground level prior to any excavation or filling to the top of the fence. I will say that I am reading this from the application, the, the, the submission of the applicants. Um, I think we wanna make sure that it is exact to what the, um, that the language is exact. If you, if we're gonna rely on this, I wanna make sure the language is exact from the zoning regs. Um, but that's what in, in, in the application, I'm reading 20.35. And then 3.4, plans for any new construction or alterations shall provide for external surfacing of brick, stone, wood, concrete, aluminum, vinyl, fiberglass, or a combination of such building materials.
Does somebody have the zoning regs? Can, can somebody find that quickly? So we can just verify that?
Yeah, I don't have it. Maybe Julie, do you have it?
I have it. Whoa. Yeah, I printed that out. So much paper.
Well, given all the, um, the possibilities of materials, you know, the brick seems like a pretty good aesthetic choice. You know, aluminum, or vinyl, or combination, any combination thereof.
Oh, I had it, I had it. I had to close a lot of windows because it was interfering with the audio. I had the regulations up. I could try again.
There we go.
Oh, Julie's got him.
Okay.
Okay, I'm trying to get the zoning regs up.
You had them up at one point. There you go.
Okay, so what, where do we wanna look at?
20.35.
Okay. This is 20.
Oh, huh. Hmm. That's weird.
20.35, nope, that's where we're, there we go, we're getting right into it. There we go. There's 20.35 fence. A constructed barrier of wood, stone, or any other materials. Combination of materials that is erected to enclose, screen, or separate an area. The height of a fence is measured from the existing ground level prior to any excavation or filling to the top of the fence.
So it sounds like it's a fence to me.
Yeah, I think it's, by our definition, I, I can see why Neil Marcus jumped on the fence, jumped down to 20 for the fence language. It's not the same as what you read, uh, I don't think, uh, is that what, Nanette? It's not what you read?
Yes, yes.
Didn't you, didn't, yeah, didn't you read earlier the regulations?
That's exactly what I read.
Oh, okay.
It's, it says.
You got it, yep.
And then, and to.
Separate. It says, it says separate area. It doesn't, it doesn't define.
Right.
Yeah, a, a cutoff area, doesn't say anything of that nature.
It says to screen, so it could, it's an "or", to enclose, or screen, or separate an area.
Mm-hmm.
Any of those three things. And then do we wanna look at the other thing that says where it can be built with the materials? Do, do you have the, uh?
Oh, this, oh, yikes, just a second. Hmm. That would be, um, sorry, 3.4.
23.4?
No, 3.4.
Oh, okay.
For new construction or alterations shall provide for external surfacing of brick, stone, wood, concrete, aluminum, vinyl, fiberglass, or a combination of such building materials.
So that was also what? It's, so it seems that both of the, this conforms to what Nanette originally read. This?
Yes.
Yes. So we know that.
Okay, anybody else?
I, 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 I would say if we approved it, if we were to approve it, I would want, um, the columns to come down to, uh, uh, everything to come to 60, not just the wall.
I would agree with that 100%.
I agree with that 100%. I agree. I, I think, as I said, as I said earlier, I'm prepared to vote yes, but I do agree that everything should be the same height. The column should not be slightly taller.
Um. A condition, uh, that I'm thinking of is, if it's primarily a screen, and I don't think it encloses or separates, but it reportedly is going to be used as a screen, that it be as limited a screen as possible. And since we're screening out light, it, I, I don't think a screen needs to have its own light or other additions to it. It should function simply as a screen, um, and not as a decorative feature, even though it is very pretty.
I don't think that's unreasonable, Margaret.
So the, so one of the conditions you're proposing, Margaret, is that there be no lighting on it?
It be as simple a screen as possible with no embellishments.
Very smart. I agree with that too. So no lighting, no electricity, nothing set up for that. It's just what, it's a brick wall, that's a screen.
But it certainly, uh, it could be embellished with plantings.
Yes, fine, right me.
So no, no, um, no man-made embellishments?
Well put.
Okay, anybody, any further comments?
Should we take the, um, the regs down? So we can see? Thank you.
Are we ready to bring it to a vote? Does anybody else wanna add anything to this discussion?
I'm, I'm set, I'm good.
You need a motion.
Alright. We'll make a motion to put to vote. Let's start with, uh, all in favor of the, uh, wall?
Not that.
Of approving the wall?
Not in those words, though.
Well, Margaret?
Well, that's where we're.
Well, I vote to approve a wall that's six feet, no higher than six feet at any part, and has no man-made embellishments like electricity lights and things like that to it, so.
It's fair.
Alright, Margaret?
So, maybe Julie can read the amendment, read the motion. It now includes an amendment regarding height and embellishments?
I can't really read it right now. You can hear from the background.
So I could try to, do we need to vote on the amendments, or can we just, we're free to motion right now? So I would like to, um, so, offer a friendly amendment to Bill's motion, and to say that, um, we are contemplating, uh, or we will approve the application as a, um, uh, we will approve the application, um, with, um, in, in particular, uh, we approve the application as a screen, uh, from the headlights, um, as a wall, we have to say as a wall, that screens. Approve the application as a wall that will screen headlights entering the property. Um, it shall not be more than six feet at any part, and it shall not have, um, uh, man-made or artificial embellishments such as light, water, um, I don't, extra appurtenances, uh, that kind of thing, uh, extra appurtenances.
Excellent.
Somebody wanna second that?
I second that.
Well, I have, I just have a question about that. Does, does that mean that the applicant's existing fountain can't be there?
No, that's already there. The fountain has nothing to do with the wall.
Okay, well, just, well, okay, Margaret's, um, Margaret just mentioned water, so.
Water, no, but I think what she means is that you can't stick a water spigot in the wall and make some sort of wall fountain. But the fountain's there, it's nothing to do with the wall.
Correct.
Okay. Um, I, did you wanna second Bill on that?
Yeah, we, yeah, you can second that. Steve, do you have any, any further comments?
No, but I would support it. I mean, I, I think the way it's been stated is, is proper.
Okay. Nanette?
Um, yeah, I, I'll, I'll support it, um, because I think that it, uh, narrowly meets the zoning, uh, the zoning regulations definition of offense. Um, and, um, so, uh, on that basis, I would support it.
I feel the same way.
Okay, so all, all in favor then?
Aye.
In favor, aye.
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 Okay, I'm in favor. I do wanna say that, um, I believe John did a great job on this case, even though it's, uh, he, he did the right thing by shutting it down and, and moving forward, and making sure that we, we amply, and we looked at everything in the way that, um, I believe it, uh, in a thorough fashion. Um, and it's a complicated, it is a complicated case, but I believe, I think this, with a six-foot, with a six-foot, uh, fence, uh, fence slash wall, I don't think that we can deny the fact that they can build that, because I believe it's to, to our code. Um, even though, um, they started out with too much height and with the possibility of other things around it, but. So, um, so we're all in favor, so to, to, uh, to approve the, uh, the six-foot wall with no lighting. And, uh, even the columns, the maximum height is six feet. Alright, and they can, they can work their, whatever, whatever, um, aren't they, um, whatever design they wanna do on the wall to make the column stand out, or how they wanna use it to be used for, for their sole purpose, it's gonna follow within the regulations that we have, which is six-foot walls. Okay.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Goodbye.
Goodnight. Take care.
Thank you, Bill.
Well, that was.
Excellent job, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't know about that, but we, uh, it's a tough case.
It would, very.
Yeah.
Very. Um, okay, I'm gonna move us now to the second case. And Julie, if you would read the, are you able to read the notice now?
Yes, Nanette, they're outside barking now.
Okay.
Okay, second case is where, uh, Daniel and Stephanie Demol, um, accessory map 21 lot 030, um, located at 61 Moosehorn Road. Case file, um, typo, once again, it should be 2022 dash 0090. Variance to build a 430.38 square foot addition laterally behind the front setback of a non-conforming dwelling. Refer to zoning regulation variance from 3.10.5 and 3.10.6.1. And I'm gonna mute myself.
Okay, thank you.
And all the abutters were notified.
Okay, um. Okay, Greg, are you speaking for the applicants?
I am. Um, for the record, this is Gregory Cava. I'm an attorney here in Roxbury at the Cava Law Firm. And, uh, I am here, uh, on behalf of Dan and Stephanie Demol, uh, in connection with this application. Um, I'd like to introduce them briefly. They're, they'll wave at you, so you can see who they are. And, uh, we're also here, in case you have any questions, with their architect, Scott Weaver, who designed this, uh, this structure, and it, and a beautiful structure it is. Um, I wanted to, can I, can I share my, um, Julie, can I share my screen?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Okay. I hope you can see that.
Yes, we can.
This, this is the house. Uh, as you can see, it's located pretty close to, um, Moosehorn Road. Um, in fact, it's located 17 feet to the front lot line, and then it's about another 15, 17, 18 feet from that to the, to the actual portion of the road. But it's, it's 17 feet distant, uh, from the road. And, um, a- a- and of course, as you're coming down the road, um, whoops, I lost the screen share here. If you're coming down the road from the direction of Davenport, um, what, what you get is, uh, is this appearance here. And, um, Moosehorn Road, as you know, has very few houses on it. Uh, across the street from this are two barns and a very large piece of property. Uh, in addition, our property, this property is surrounded by another property, so there are two abutters or across the street people, um, and both of them have not only, uh, not objected, they have actually consented to the application, or urging to grant it. Uh, we submitted letters for the file from, uh, from both of those neighbors, uh, who, who really wanna, wanna see this, um, this work out for, for my clients. Uh, let me, um, uh, give you a, a little bit of an appearance of, of the house and, and the direction around it. Give me one second while I share that out. Um. The rear of the house. Oh, boy, why can't I see that? We try once again. Boy, I, I, I think we're having a little bit of a, okay, a new share, here we go. Um. I won't, it won't take it. Oh, here we go. Okay, the rear of the house, as you can see, the driveway comes around from the road behind the rear, and then it comes back up to the rear of the house. And it is fairly, it's, it's a fairly steep drop off. If you look to the, to the side of the house, which is what I want to show you also here, if I can pull that picture up. The ground drops off pretty, pretty precipitously that way. And also it drops off in the rear once you get past the driveway, and I've got a shot on that as well. Oh, boy. Having trouble making it take these. Excuse me, one second. Sorry. We've got a lot of screen real estate here. Okay, so you, you have, you have the rear of the house. And then on, and then on the side of the house, the north side of the house is where we want to put the addition. And I think that must be up on the screen now.
It's not.
It's not. Well, we try that again, and then let me see if I can get to a new share.
You probably just want to close this, this photo.
Yeah, I probably do. It, it's not allowing me to do a, a, a share, so let me try that again. Okay, we're gonna try to share that.
We have pictures, I think.
Yeah, I think you do. And anyway, this, this is the side of the house where we want to put it. And this is probably the least steep place you, you're looking at on the site, and it's, it's a pretty good location for it. What we're gonna do is this chimney here, if you can see my cursor, this brick chimney here is going to be removed. That, that brick, that brick chimney actually sits within the front yard setback, and that's going to be removed. And when that happens, it, it will not be replaced. And, and therefore, the structure itself will be located behind the front yard setback, and so this will actually reduce the nonconformity of the house because we're removing a nonconforming piece. Let me stop.
Greg, could you go back to that picture?
Oh, I'm sorry. The one we were just looking at with the chimney?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Okay, give me one second. Here we go.
Okay, where's the road?
The road is to the left here. It's, you can see the front fence.
Yeah.
And the road comes along.
All right, and then would you put would you put your pointer at where the, the expansion is gonna be?
Yeah, it's gonna be back here. It's gonna be coming off this end of the house. Let me actually show you what that looks like because I think it'll, it'll help if we, if we actually take a look at the elevation that, um, whoops. So let me share this. This, this is, this is where the addition is gonna come, right off the back of the, of, of the addition that's behind the structure. There's an addition that was put on subsequently behind the main structure, and this is gonna come right off it. The chimney that was over here has gone, and now you've got this, this addition coming off the back. If you note that the roof line is, is below and stepped down from the top roof of the addition. It's, for all intents and purposes, a story and a half addition because it's got these low windows, you know, what we call eyebrow windows that are off for the second floor. And then it sits back here. If you look at the back of the house.
And how far back is that off the road?
It's 50, the 50 foot line is, is in front of it. It's behind the 50 foot setback from the road. So it is, and, and also it's 98 feet from the boundary over here to this side. So it is completely, and it's hundreds of feet from the back boundary. So it's a completely conforming location for this, this addition, this small addition. And I can actually show you on the, it'll be easier if I show you the site plan.
And it's also the 25% limit to the expansion on a nonconforming structure. It's within that 25% of the footprint.
That's correct. It, it is, it is 25% or less of the, of the, the footprint of the house, of the existing structure. And so here's where the addition is, right, right, coming off here. And again, here's your 50 foot setback, so it is behind the 50 foot setback. And it's a relatively modest addition. It's about 24 by 19, which is in essence, one room on each floor. The, the half floor upstairs is a bedroom. The lower floor is, the lower room is more of a television recreation area type room. But again, it's, it's one room large, and it, it allows this house to be four bedrooms, which is necessary because there's only a three bedroom house. They have two children, one's a boy, one's a girl, and it'd be nice to have a place for the grandparents or other guests to stay when they're there in the house. And so that really is the, the, the point behind it. Now, there, there are a number of hardships. The first, of course, which is the house was built in 1801 or thereabout. So it was built long before anyone even thought of the concept of zoning, much less Roxbury having regulations. So this is a classic case of it's the strict application of the ordinance to something that preexisted that causes the hardship. In, in addition, the grades on this property are such that if, if you can't go up, because if you went up, you would number one exceed the two and a half stories that's allowed in this zone, you'd also exceed the 40 foot maximum height. So you can't go up. You can't go this way. It's too steep coming off this direction. You can't go out the back because you would have to move the existing driveway. And if you move that driveway, it starts to interfere with an intermittent water course here in the pond and this area that's, and, and the area that's wetlands in, in associated with it. Let me just show you, I want to, I'd like to show you that. If I can get rid of this, this sharing here, what happened to my screen share?
The wetlands line on there?
I've, I seem to have lost my screen sharing. Oh, here it is. Okay, it's moved on me. So I want, I would like to show you those, those rear areas because I think they're they're quite, it's, it's a quite interesting thing. What you see when you look directly out the back of the house is you see this whoops, where'd it go? Oh, here it is. You, you, you see that there's this intermittent stream that crosses the property and then goes into the pond. It comes from up, further up in, in the north direction. Now, if you look at this from the opposite direction, that's where you can really see the problem in terms of the steepness of it. Let me, let me get rid of this. And I'll share that other. If, if you look at this, from this, to the direction, you can see that the land tapers off a bit. And if you move this driveway far enough over to get it out of the range, you allow it to continue to serve the house, you're talking about this area here having to be filled with a considerable number of truckloads of fill. And what will happen is by the time you grade it out to here, you're grading it practically into the intermittent water course in the pond. So there's, I, I'm not thinking this is something that wetlands would be too excited about our doing. So I think on this site, we have put it in the one location that it can be put. You know, where, where, where it's able to, it's able to do that. The other, the other nice thing is I'd like to share this particular thing if I can, whoops, I can stop that. Is that this, this will be fairly well screened from the road.
Let's not talk about screens again.
Yes, we're back to screening. I've gotta stop it and try it again. It won't.
Cause you're on full screen probably with that image. You gotta, gotta shrink it.
Uh, no, it is shrunk down, and I, I don't know. I'm gonna get rid of this one, too. Let's try one more time. No, it won't.
You want me to share it? I have the image here as well.
Oh, hold on a second. Let me see if I can, no, that's, that's not it. I'm just gonna get rid of this. Let's try this again. Let's get it off of full size and let's get rid of it, and let's try one more time, because I'm clicking on the image that I have open. Well, let's make sure it's open. Okay, now I'm gonna click on that image. There.
Ah ha.
So as you can see, the addition is hiding here behind this very large tree that's in front of the house. And so the net effect is, is if you're, even if there were a house across the street, you would, you know, this would be very well screened by the existing vegetation. But there is no house across the street. There's not a house for quite some distance up, up the road to, toward the, toward Davenport. It's quite a distance before you get to another house there, but there are barns across the street. But in any event, thi- this is a pretty well conceived, well screened addition. And it's in this location because we, we can't go up, we can't go, we can't go to the south, we can't go to the east or the, the west, rather, and the only place we can go is to the north. You obviously can't come out this way. You wouldn't put an addition on the front of the house, and it would be nonconforming anyway. So this is really the place where, where it can be put. And I think it would be a, a, a good addition, and it, clearly, there is, there is hardship for it. And so I think that's, I think that's more or less what we're, we're seeking to do here.
So I, I, I have a question. Um. If, if it's, you know what, if it's within the 25% and like, what, what's the variance that you need?
Well, I, we couldn't get, we couldn't get a special permit for it. And so there's this issue of lateral.
Right. Yeah, well, if I can answer, maybe. When I went and spoke to John down in building, he said, I think you gotta bring this before ZBA, even though it's behind the setback and it is within the 25%. And I asked him, you know, well, the way that I read it is as long as it's not increasing the nonconforming structure, which it's not, and it's not beyond the 25%, I don't think we need it. I don't think we need to do that. We would just need a permit to do that, right? And he says, no, I think now you need to bring it before the ZBA to have them at least review it and be aware of it. I think that's the better, the better move. And I said, okay. And so he came out and saw the site, and I said, well, we can't go out any other ways. And then I sort of talked to him about the wetlands issue and, and the topography and all that, and sent him an email, a note with some photos and, and, and he came and visited and then wrote back in the affirmative that says, yep, that makes sense, and I'll, I'll let, I'll let the board know, but I think you should put an application in to proceed with this. And so.
So 25% rule, we've been advised by our council only applies, the language of it is really clear, it only applies to the rear of the house.
Yeah, except your counsel is wrong. I'll tell you why.
Well.
I, I'll, I'll tell you why, because all you have to do is.
Stop the editorializing. Why don't you tell us?
Well, okay. I'm sorry, there's all kinds of back noises there. If you look at, I put on the screen section 3.10, 5, 6, and also 7. And, and it's, it's the, it's the way you, it's the way you read it. And what it says, it's no nonconforming. I, I don't know what that. Uh, no, non, 3.10.6. No nonconforming building, a non, to go to a conforming, it'll be enlarged by exception release to the nonconforming. Then it goes on to say limited height to expand the nonconforming primary dwelling up to 25% of the existing footprint. So that's 3.10.6.1. And you have to look at 3.10.7, which also doubles it. Expansion is subject to 3.10.7. So when you scroll down to that, you look at two, that says an increase in footprint, footprint within a setback line must be positioned behind the nonconforming structure with no lateral expansion within that setback. You see, no lateral expansion within that setback. And then it says, for example, where a dwelling is located within the front setback, the addition must be behind the dwelling so that no portion of the expanded footprint literally laterally increases the setback nonconformity. Now, if, if uh, and let me, let me.
We're not doing either of those things. We're not.
Let me put this aside, and I want you to look at the site plan again. And, and, and the thing you have to notice here is what that says is if, if, if this were the original house, okay, and the original house is this. Okay, this thing that says existing house, this, this is the, an addition that was put off. Okay, if this were the original house, and we're located, it's located entirely within the setback. If you were gonna expand, if nothing else was here, you were gonna expand this, you'd have to go back like this addition did. You couldn't go to the side because you're going to the side would be a lateral expansion within the setback. So you see, the problem in, with the way counsel is interpreting it is you have to read that. It says you can't laterally expand within the setback, and we're not doing that. We're, we're likely to be expanding behind the setback. This is completely legal, and I think, I think the way this regulation is being read is incorrect. And, and I think the very language of the regulation is what does it. And I think if you read it, what you see is, what it's talking about is where the whole house is within the setback. Here, the house goes back, and we're adding to the part that's conforming, that's behind the setback. And so that's why I think this regulation is being misinterpreted.
But I think our additionally, we're driven to that choice because of the hardship of the topography and the wetlands as well. So even if we wanted, if it made sense to go off the back, we really couldn't do that unless we were willing to sort of damage the, the, the pond, which our kids play in daily and they ice skate on in the winter, the last thing.
Yeah, right, right. But can I just, can I just interrupt for a second? Because I don't think that's what the, what the board is asking. And so I think that uh, our application asks for a variance of these regulations to permit the addition to the extent to which, because that's the way the, the zoning enforcement, or the, yeah, zoning enforcement officer was interpreting it. But also, in line with what your counsel has been telling you, which I don't believe is correct. I, I think your counsel may be saying something, but, but you guys might be speaking past each other. She, she's a really good lawyer. And I think she's telling you what, what I'm saying, but I don't think that it's translating or saying some way because it's, it's, there's a complicated scenario. There's two different potential scenarios. But in our application, we also asked for a variance of the front yard setback to allow this thing to be, to, to be coming off of a nonconforming building. So in any event, I think that's the reason we're here. This is almost, this is literally the same as the Fleischer application that I was last in front of you on at 7 Battle Swamp Road, where they were putting a, they were reducing a nonconformity by making the parts they were attaching laterally to the house in a conforming location smaller than the one that had been previously approved. So here, what we're doing is we're eliminating a portion of the, of the building, the chimney, that's, that's in a nonconforming location. And we're putting an addition in a conforming location, admittedly laterally, but I don't think lateral is, is prohibited. In fact, it's the only place you can put anything. And that's our, and, and so, and that, and that's the, that, that really is also the nature of the hardship because you can't go out the back of the building if you wanted to. You just can't without going into, getting into a wetlands miasma and creating a problem in terms of impacting the stream because of the amount of fill you would have to bring in in order to move the driveway to the rear. So it's just, the only place it works is off this side. Otherwise, the, the regulations between, whether they be wetlands regulations, which didn't exist when the main house was built, or, or they be zoning regulations, they are all creating, it's the, the strict interpretation enforcement of the regulations is creating a legal hardship for us.
Questions from the board? Margaret?
So this is it, it used to be, I think, as people say, that ZBAs would aid for what is fair and seems sensible. And it might be that this is, is a nice application in, in terms of trying to do something for the applicant and for the house, but I don't see a hardship. The, the regulations are pretty strict. The structure itself is nonconforming. And you're not allowed to add to it. And we've told people they, like, couldn't put breezeways, you know? And you do get 25% in the back under the new, is it about a year old? The new zoning effort to help homeowners who are on non, have nonconforming buildings to at least get 25% an ability to expand 25%. It.
Greg, can you, can you take that down so we can see each other, please?
I'm sorry, hold on. Go ahead.
So it's, you know, we've had, um, we've been over this with our attorney. I went and listened last night to her March three presentation she did on these issues. I looked at, again, at, they have Verillo and Caruso and um the fact that it's a um, that the house predates zoning uh doesn't unfortunately, because for me, does not make it a hardship. The, the que, the question is can you, that twenty-five percent is just for the back and it cannot be, what, what the new regulation seems to say is if you can't do it in the back, you're basically coming to the ZBA with a de novo application, an application um to have a lateral expansion on your house, which absent a hardship and given the new, the relatively new case law that we're looking at and the advice of counsel, we have to say, as I think we've said before, it's the back or nothing. And I know it's um, I know it's not the way the ZBA necessarily, you know, would like to interpret it. But um I hesitate to second guess counsel. Um, it's, maybe it's a tough call, but she's a good land use attorney. I think she makes sense on this point. And um I'm not sure that if you had to build in the back, that it could not be done. I see that there's a problem with wetlands, but um basically you're in the position of having to establish a hardship right to do with the topography of the property and um, I just, I think you have to regard this as a, as a new application. You, the twenty-five percent doesn't apply in your case because you say you can't build there or it would be uh too awkward. So you're coming in, forget the twenty-five percent, you're coming in with a new application with an extension that doesn't appear to be legal under our zoning. Um, so that's, and I think that's consistent with what our counsel has been telling us. And um, so that's um my um statement. Be nice to make, that's, that's how I see this.
Can we um, since Mr. Kava has, has read, read the regulations for us layman and it was pretty fast, but let's give him another opportunity to, to read his argument a little bit slower as to, as to what he's referring to as far as the twenty-five percent.
Sure, uh, let, let me share.
If you're, I'm, I'm not, not, we're, we are layman as you, as you, as you point out. So we would, we would benefit with a little bit slower explanation of what you're trying to say that our town attorney is, is, is incorrect. And so, thank you.
All right. Well, okay. So, so if you look at three point ten point six, it says limited right, this is called limited right to expand nonconforming primary dwelling. Okay, um, maybe expand it, alter or enlarge up to twenty-five percent of its footprint. Uh, if you then look down below, it's, it, it says this expansion is also subject to the requirements of three, ten, seven. So this, this part here, three, ten, six, one, doesn't say anything about back of the building or anything. This says you can expand it to twenty-five percent. And then you get to three, ten, seven. Okay. And if you look at three, ten, seven, it says it must be positioned behind the nonconforming dwelling or barn. If the entire building is nonconforming, yes, it must be behind it. All right. But you have to keep reading. It says with no lateral expansion within that setback. Okay, there is no lateral expansion with this proposed addition within the fifty-foot setback. It's all behind the fifty-foot setback line. And then it goes, and it gives an example where a dwelling is located within the front setback. That means the whole dwelling is located within the front setback. Then the addition must be behind the dwelling so that no portion of the expanded footprint laterally increases the setback nonconformity. Now, this addition does not laterally increase the setback non, the setback nonconformity is it's not fifty feet. The, the original part of the house is not fifty feet from the front yard. Okay? That's the nonconformity. But the, the new proposed addition is within the fifty foot, is, is pa, is beyond the fifty-foot setback line. Therefore, it is not laterally increasing the setback nonconformity. Okay, uh, let me um take this off.
When you, when, when you said the whole structure, can you read that, that, that again one more time? Where you said the whole, you're, 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 you're interpreting the whole structure. I'm not sure. I'm seeing that it say the whole structure.
Well, what it says is, says where a dwelling is located within the front setback. Doesn't say part of a dwelling. It says a dwelling. And that would be, i- i- and what I was trying to show you with the, with the, with the site plan um, is that the original building was indeed, and the original house is this square right here. This is the eighteen-ten portion of the house. That entire house was located behind this line. And no, you could not have put, this, this addition that was put on first could not have gone out the side because it would have increased the nonconformity, the setback nonconformity. But now we're talking about going behind the setback line. And that's perfectly legal because that's not increasing the setback nonconformity. The setback nonconformity is anything ahead of the fifty feet, between fifty feet and the road. This is behind fifty feet. So that means it's totally compliant and therefore that regulation. I mean, uh, see, well, let me go back to the regulation because there is a rule of construction I need to tell you about. And uh, I only wish your counsel were here tonight because I think we might get this resolved. But if, if, if we look at what this says, no portion of the expanded footprint laterally increases the setback noncon, you wouldn't need that language if, if everything had to be behind the house. All you would say is that, is that every addition, every, you, you wouldn't even need three, ten, seven. You could go back to three, ten, six, and you could say uh, maybe expand it, alter and large up to a maximum of twenty-five percent of the footprint so long as it's located behind the house. But that's not what the regulation is trying to do. It's not trying to say it has to be behind the house. It's, what it says is, is it's gotta be behind a house where the house is in the setback. But if it's not in the setback, and this house is in both in the setback and behind it, if you're only adding behind it, as long as it doesn't increase, laterally increase the setback nonconformity, you're good to go. And this does not increase the setback nonconformity because it's behind the, the line of conformity. This is precise, you granted the same variance on, at sixty-seven Battle Swamp Road.
We, and we wouldn't grant it now.
Why?
Because, because the regs have been rewritten.
No, they haven't. Not since sixty-seven Battle Swamp.
Yes.
You didn't, this reg has not been rewritten since last, since, since earlier this year.
Yes.
Write this reg.
Yes.
We uh, the, we, we, i- i- it's, it, we decided the, the, the Fleischer, well, let's, it, it, it doesn't matter because e- every case is, is individual. So I, I think there are two issues here though. One is the issue of could you go laterally? And the second is the issue hardship.
I agree with Margaret that on, that the desire to add the, to add the addition does not meet the definition of hardship under the new case law.
Hmm, can I ask a question about that? So, so I looked at, there was an approval of a, of a previous application completely within the setback due to wetlands because there was a stream behind the structure. We, we have the same issue here. If, if we built, John's been to the house. He said, yeah, this, this would, you'd be in the waterway. You'd be in the water course. We have massive storms here, as we all know, that this, there's like a running river in our backyard during some of these storms. We would now be in that, that wetland setback and, and basically upsetting that with all of the filter we've brought in, which would then wash away every time we did that. That's, that's the concern. That's what John suggested when, when he came out and, and looked at it.
Yeah, and I would add.
Well, I think, well, I think what we're doing right now, what I'm doing is just trying, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at a case, sort of an argument by argument basis. Like, I know, I know what you have in the backyard and what I seem to, I'm well aware of that road. Live not too far from you folks. And I go down a moose on all the time. So I understand that, but I'm just speaking to what Mr. Kava said. That's our first, that's my first challenge. And then I guess we'll talk further about hardship. So that's what, I'm just trying to get some clarity here, that's all. But thank you.
Understood.
Other um questions? Bill, did you have another question?
Well, I, I think my, I just made my last comment and I'm just trying to process um, you know, sort of the twenty-five percent, some, something that as, as you and I discussed many times, we, we, we have not been able to do certain things within, within that. But, but the question is, is if you can't put it behind the house, our, what is our argument? Is, is, is it bring it, bring, bring the whole case in front of us and, and then we look at what, what, what the application is, right? So.
Well, if, yeah, if I might answer that, i- i- the this gets to, your question gets to the issue of hardship.
Right.
And, and what we've got are, we, we, we've got wetlands, water courses and, and behind the house. That's classic hardship because those were not regulated when this house was built. Okay, wetlands regulations didn't come in until nineteen seventy-four. Uh, tha- that's when they passed the wetlands laws. Um, so, so this house was built long before there were wetlands laws. This house was built long before there were zoning laws. There's a hardship in that the house was built in a location that was perfectly legal when it would, the original part of the house was built because there were no setbacks. There was no such thing as zoning. Uh, we've got topography. We've got very steep topography. It goes off to the south and it goes off to the west. And therefore it's very difficult to, to build anything behind that house without having to raise the level of the topography to get the driveway in and, and to move the driveway. And when you do that, you then are going, you're invading the water course and you're invading the wellings. You're not, we're not going to get a wetland permit for that because we have a feasible and prudent alternative. We can build, uh, we can build on the side of the house as of right under your twenty-five percent regulation, which I'm sorry, but it's being misinterpreted. Uh, because you, you, we're not laterally increasing, we're not violating it because we're not laterally increasing the nonconformity. And so be, between the multiple iss- instances of hardship and, and the fact that, that, that we meet the definition of, of, of no lateral, no laterally, no lateral increase of the setback nonconformity. Uh, w- we should be able to build this. Also, there's been reference to the new case law and you're referring to Verillo versus zoning board of appeals of Branford. That's a two thousand fifteen case that got everybody in the wetlands, in the zoning boards of appeals across the state a little bit crazy. But you have to remember what Verillo says is we do recognize an exception where you are taking one hardship and making something less offensive. In other words, less hardship. I mean, you, you, I'm sorry, hardship is there and you're okay and you, and you don't have a problem with the Verillo court if you're taking a nonconformity and making it less nonconforming. And as I said, we are eliminating a portion of the house that is in the setback and is nonconforming. So we are reducing the nonconformity and under Verillo, that, that means we're good. Uh, tha- tha- in that case scared people, but you have to read it. And whenever you're decreasing the, and that's why Fleischer was properly granted because that also decreased the nonconformity. So whenever you're decreasing the nonconformity, you don't have to worry about Verillo or any of the new cases. Uh, and here in this case, we are. So uh, wha- what I'm saying is we have hardship. We've got demonstrated hardship. And uh, we, we've got a situation in which we're not laterally increasing the setback nonconformity. We're not taking a house seventeen feet from the road and building an addition seventeen feet from the road or twenty feet from the road or thirty feet from the road. We're building one that's at least fifty feet from the road. And so it's conforming. It's completely conforming. And you know, I've got to tell you.
Greg, let me, let me, let me let the rest of the board ask their questions, okay?
This Steve Meyer speaking. Uh, my question is, when you say there's a diminution of the house which violated the present zoning, is that the removal of the fireplace that you're talking about?
It, it's the removal of that chimney reduces the amount of area that is nonconforming. It reduces the amount of the, the, the square footage that's nonconforming.
And the other question I had is, is it your position that if the portion of the house which you want to annex the addition to is behind the setback, that the rest of this becomes irrelevant?
Well, it should because that's what the regulation would seem to say. If we, if we read it, if we read all of it. Uh, that's what the regulation says is that, is that you can build as long as you're behind the setback. You're not laterally increasing the setback. You're okay to go lateral. And that, that's the way, that's the way I think is the only reasonable reading of that regulation. Otherwise, three, ten, seven is, is not needed. And one of the rules of construction is, is that every part of the zoning code is, is deemed to be there for a purpose and is needed. And, and once you say nothing to the back, you don't need seven, ten. Uh, so that's why I'm saying, I don't think seven, ten says what you think it says. And I think if Gail McTaggart were here, Gail would, would agree with me. I'm almost virtually certain she would agree with me because you gotta look at the language.
How, I have one question, just one last question. The, what portion of this house is behind the setback line, the existing house?
Uh, yeah, actually, if you look here, uh, uh, let me share this thing so you can see the site plan because the site plan has it's on it. Okay, if you, i- i- if you look at the site plan, um, what you will see is the hundred-foot setback from the wetlands runs up here and right through the porch and directly behind the house. So this is all wetland setback area here. And the wetlands are down here by the pond and this, and this area here. And, and this whole area does get quite wet. So your regulated area is somewhat wet and, and the purpose uh, for the wetlands commission of having a hundred-foot setback or a hundred-foot regulated area is because things that happen within the regulated area can negative, have a negative impact on the water course and wetlands. And when you move this driveway over to here and you have to slope it down, you're going to have it pitching right into the wetland and it's likely that, that, that it's going to get washed out by storms. And you're going to get fines and all kinds of bad silt and everything else into the wetlands and ponds. And that's why a wetlands commission would have a problem with, with moving that driveway back there to do that. Uh, I mean, I served for nine years on the wetlands commission, so I think I know just a little bit about how they approach these things. And I think that would be a problem for the wetlands commission. And that's the area that's wet, basically.
But I was asking something else. Sorry, I was asking something different. In other words, there's no question that the house is close to the road and therefore it doesn't conform with the setback from the road. But is there, if you take the fifty setback, is there a portion of the existing house that's behind that?
Yes, here, here, here is the setback. This red line going across here is the setback.
That's the section we're at, um, attaching to is the, all the portion that's behind the setback. The.
All of this part of the house is behind, most of the porch and this part of the house is behind the setback and the entire addition is attaching to the part behind the setback and it's uh, and it's, and the entire addition is behind the setback.
No, thank you. That was the question.
Okay, I'm sorry. I missed your question. I.
How many, how many square feet is the house?
So twenty-six, twenty-six.
Currently, currently twenty-six hundred?
Yeah, twenty-six something is the total square footage up and down.
And then the, uh, the addition? Yep.
We're, we're adding a, the fourth bedroom for, you know, we didn't have kids when we bought the house nine years ago and now we have two.
And we live here.
And we're long, tall, big kids, so uh, we, we can't have them share forever.
Other questions? Karen?
Okay, Karen Copte, um, I ca, I um, I um, can see the, uh, the hardship of topography. But what I, what I'm having a little, what I'm having a problem with is that it, it seems that the um, the attorney, Mr. Kava, is asking us as a board to disregard what we have been explicitly advised by our attorney. Gail McTaggart, where, where we've have recently uh, had to um turn down applications because they were not going to the rear. It, the, the application does seem to fill, you know, che- check all the boxes in terms of the twenty-five percent and the, behind the setback. Uh, the only. The only stumbling block for me is this, uh, the part about the. Uh, you know, the lateral versus to the rear. And, um, I'm just wondering if perhaps. You know, we can, we could bring it to Gail. Or, you know, are we, I, I mean, I don't know that I feel, I don't know if I feel comfortable saying, oh, yeah, oh, you know. Oh, Gail, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna disregard what Gail has advised us.
I agree, by the way, I think it's important, um, since the lawyer has raised some very interesting issues. Basically, and it. I'm saying that the, the way the regulations are written, there's, we're misunderstanding them. But I think it best to ask Gail for her opinion.
So I, I. I think that Greg is misunderstanding what our understanding of what Gail has said. Um, Gail has said. There has to be a hardship in order to approve that there has to be a hardship. I don't see the hard, I, I understand that there's a hardship in terms of topography. But I don't think the. My understanding of Gail's interpretation of the earlier cases is that. The desire to add another room. The need to have another room constitutes a hardship.
Exactly, for that, I think that the twenty-five percent thing says you don't have to have a hardship.
If you go to the rear. But, but what Gail was, uh, said to us and in that presentation. Was that if you're going to go laterally, you have to have. A, a valid hardship. And. My understanding of. Her interpretation, and I'm. Happy to put this off and, and talk to Gail about it, is that. The. Interests of an individual owner in expanding. Does not constitute a hardship. The desire to have another room. It's personal. And a hardship can't.
That's not what we're asking. The, we're not asking that, that, that we're not citing that as the hardship. That's the reason for wanting to go forward with the project, but that's not the hardship. The, the hardship is topography, the hardship is the, the antique nature of the house and its current location. The hardship is the wetlands, the, the hardship or height and, and, and other issues related to the topography. That, those are the hardships. So, but, please don't confuse the reason they want to do this with what, what the hardship is. And you know, the sort of the.
What I'm saying is it's not a hardship to not have the other room, is what Gail would say.
We're not asking, that's not what we're asking, that's not the hardship we're citing.
We're suggesting that to- topography and, and the stream and the pond is the hardship.
Right, because nonconformity is not, uh, and having an old house.
Right.
The road is, it doesn't. Um, qualify as a hardship.
I think, I, I think that what might, we might profit from, rather than, because it's almost nine o'clock. We might profit from putting this over to the next meeting. And, uh, allowing you and me to discuss at various times, to discuss this with Gail McTaggart and see what. See how she reads this regulation, because I, I do believe. I do believe it means what she says, but it also doesn't mean what she says. And there's a defining point, and that is. Is the how house behind the, you, you gotta go back when the whole house is in the setback. And I think that's what it says. Um, and the question is. If, if it's, see, i- if it is, i- i- if it is ambiguous. Then the question of how a court will interpret it. And what a court will say is, well, you wouldn't need the language about laterally increasing the setback nonconformity if. There was no case in which you couldn't go behind the house, it would have been worded differently. You could only go behind the house, would have been worded differently, would have said that. And so they'll, it doesn't need this language about laterally increasing setback nonconformity. And so a court would say that if you interpret it the way that you're interpreting it, that that leads to bizarre results. And that's the word the court uses, bizarre results, because you've got language that's being ignored, and they don't let you do that. So I, I think maybe we would benefit from Gail.
Greg, can you?
Gail and I noodling over this.
Can you request a continue?
Yes.
Would you do that?
Yes, I'll, I'll request a continuance to the next meeting. Do you need me to send an email to Julie?
No. I don't think so. I think, I think as, as long as the applicants request the continuance, we're fine. Is the board okay with this?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes, absolutely. Wh- when is your next me, uh, meeting?
Um, September.
September fifteenth.
September fifteenth.
Can I ask a question of the, of the board before?
Sure, of course.
I'm just curious because I, I think. The, part of the issue here is we're sort of conflating two parts of this. One, we're talking about language. And that's one thing that we're discussing, which I think we need to discuss potentially separately. And then we're also talking about hardship here, which is, is a diff-. For issue, assuming that the first part holds. I think it's our point of view that we still have a hardship here. So I'm just curious because, uh, Nanette, I believe you said, this isn't a hardship, so. In your, can you explain that, why this wouldn't be a hardship, the, the, the stream and the topography? Why, why wouldn't that be a hardship? Just from my own edification, it would help me understand this a little better.
My understa- my understa- I had, no, Bill, go ahead, you go.
I think at this point, discussing it further is probably against the, because. I th- I, I, I actually think that I, I see the wetlands as, as a potential hardship in, in, in this matter. I think it's gonna weigh in the, the long term. But I'm not sure how, how much further you want to go into the, into this case at this point.
Okay, understood.
I mean.
That sounds good.
Nanette, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, 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 I think it's a good point. I think it's a good point.
Thank you.
Um, I will, um. Could I have a motion to continue? Um, th- th- this application until the September meeting?
Motion to continue. I'll second it.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
In favor, yep, aye.
All right, so, um, Greg, uh, Gail is away, otherwise I would have asked her to be here. Um, so, um, I think she's back towards the end of the month. And we will, um, we'll, we'll fill her in on what's, what's happened, and then if, if, uh. It's, it seems appropriate, then the three of us can have a conversation.
Yeah, I would really like to speak to her if at all possible, just because I think this is a. I think this is a, is a, is a language interpretation thing, and I think, I think she might agree with me, but I, I need to find out why she. If she doesn't, I need to find out why she doesn't. Uh, I, I would really hate to have to go apply. For multiple permits and get turned down and bring a bunch of appeals to court, because that, that's, that's just expensive time consuming enough what we want to do. I think we want to figure out how this works, and I think that's a good, a good approach for us to meet with Gail and try to figure out how this works. Uh, and maybe we can come to some understanding of it, um.
We have some growing pains from the, um. The addition of the twenty-five percent rule and how it's being interpreted and, and, um. And I think a, a, a lot of the questions now come to us rather than zoning because. Because there is some confusion over how to interpret it. So. Let's just wait till Gail is back, have a conversation and see. Um, how we can move forward.
Yeah, and I, I don't have a problem going to the zoning commission if we need them to weigh in. Uh, I don't have a problem to.
I'm, I'm in favor of that. I, I think, um, I think there's a very reasonable request on that, on this house, and I think, uh. Let's get to the bottom of it.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. So. I guess we will see you back on the fifteenth, maybe, Nanette, you and I might see each other earlier.
Exactly.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you all very much for your attention and your patience with my long-winded presentation.
We appreciate it. Thanks, everybody. We'll see you next month. Okay, before the board departs, though, um, we need to approve the minutes from the. Uh, public hearing special meeting of March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. Which were included in your packet.
So March, was that where they had to move the septic system?
Yeah, right, that's the one.
Yep, um, okay, I vote to approve. I move to approve.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye. Yes, aye.
Okay.
Okay, I have a very quick question, if I may. Um, when do you think we'll all be able to meet in person?
Um. Perhaps we should, uh, Julie, are, are commissions meeting in person now?
Um, yes, certain ones are, planning is meeting in person and on Zoom, they're doing hybrid. Um.
I think.
Florida Finance is doing, is doing hybrid. Uh, Wetlands is still meeting remotely. Um, but I understand like Conservation's meeting in person, um, Historic Commission's meeting in person.
So I, I've participated in meetings with our new system where you can meet hybrid. And it's actually a great system. I mean, when, if you're, if you are not there. If you're on the hybrid end of it, you really do feel like you're in the room. So I, um, I think that, um, we can certainly go Jim to a hybrid meeting. And in, um, September, and so people who want to be there in person can be there in person, and people. Who's, who still aren't comfortable can be, um, on the, on the screen.
Okay, I'm, I, I just so much prefer to do this in person.
Yep.
Um, obviously.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, see, everyone, and, and we'll, we will, um. Karen, go ahead.
Oh, nothing, I'm.
We'll let you know, um. Um. I, I think that, um, I think it's useful to bring zoning into this conversation as well.
Yes. I agree.
How do we, we might need some, but how do we bring in zoning in the middle of considering an application?
We don't.
We don't. So it would have to be later. And we can talk to Gail about this application. And, but I don't think we can talk to zoning about it, am I right?
We can talk to zoning about the issue broadly, we just can't talk to zoning about this application. But we can talk to zoning about their understanding of the meaning of, of the regulations.
Yes.
Yeah, didn't we, did, did we have a big discussion? Uh, I'm sorry for interrupting, go ahead.
I was just gonna say the law, the, the law is a shield, not a sword. There's a generalization.
Yeah.
I, I mean, if, if I may, I, I mean, that, you, then I do think that. The, the only point that is unique, or at least I haven't heard it or heard it discussed, is if. The portion of the house you're adding to is the nonconforming portion. Doesn't, does it matter? You know, and I'm not, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, yeah, I think, but I, I think that if, that's why I really want to get to the bottom of this. I think that's a. I think it would give us more leeway to prove things that we need to improve. I mean, that's the, that's sort of like, there's certain things we have to deny that we have. We, we. There were reasonable requests that, that we need, we need, it's either we go back to zoning, but if this does clarify it a little bit, if it's a chance that we have. A little bit more sort of say in what we're doing here, because well, right now, I think all of us feel, I feel very. And, and I know I do, and I think most everybody feels kind of like tied to, to, uh. To, as I always say, to a state statute that, in, in, in a town that's so far away from some of the, some, you know. When you take Branford, Connecticut, and Roxbury, you could be on the other side of the country, you know, and it's just. Quite frustrating at times.
Well, I absolutely agree, and, and my recollection is, is that there was a case on River Road a few months ago. Where we turned down. Yeah, strike to me is very similar to what these folks are asking. We made it very clear that all the issues that they raised about topography and house and all that kind of stuff. Were just not considered to be, um, uh, issues for us. They were not, uh, so. So I would love to hear, um, if, if this lawyer has a point in, in what he's basically saying is there's. There's, uh, there's a loophole here, or the way it's written is unclear enough to allow someone. To interpret it a different way, and that's definitely not the message I got when we spoke with our own lawyer, who made it pretty clear that. That we really didn't have much power here, um. Yeah, so, so this is, I think this has been a very useful thing to bring up to see if. I don't, you know the gentleman, I'm sure, because he's in town. I don't know this particular lawyer, but.
Yes, I think he, no, he, I think he's still here, actually.
I think he's pretty sincere, so. Is he still, I mean, I'm sorry, he's still on this thing?
I think so.
Oh, yeah, I'm still here. You're still talking about my, my situation, so I can't leave.
So, I, I think, I, my recollection is that, uh, at the end of our last meeting, we had a big discussion saying. We really need to get together with.
Let's, let's.
Yeah.
Um.
I think we have a plan.
And. Um, let's, let's just wait till Gail comes back.
Yes.
Yep.
Excellent, okay.
Great idea.
And we have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adj- and motion to adjourn.
Third, fourth.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Nanette, it's great seeing you back.
Thank you, it's good to be back. Thank you.
And good job, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Well, we'll see you guys.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.